Oconomowoc Committee of the Whole Meeting for Tuesday, July 19th, 2022. Has appropriate meeting notification been made?
Yes, Your Honor, it has.
If you would call roll, please, for the record.
Alderman Douglas.
Here.
Alderman Rosick.
Here.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Here.
Alderman, you sassy. Oh, I'm sorry.
Should I do it for Kevin now?
Alderman Ellis.
Here.
Silverg.
Here.
Alderman Mulder. Alderman Shellpepper. Alderman Kavieski.
Here. Start these meetings even earlier. Welcome, everybody.
I told Joe Pickard good morning as I was walking in, so.
Welcome, everybody. We're going to move on to committee business. Presentation by the Rockwell Development Partners. If you'd please approach the podium and identify yourself, and we're looking forward to your feedback. Thank you, gentlemen.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeff Skrema, General Manager of Rockwell Partners, and happy to be back with you this evening. And we want to give you an update and then open it up to you if you have any further questions or clarifications you'd like us to make. The first update is that we held three open public information sessions last week and this week. We had two last week and one this week. We placed them on different nights of the week to give anyone who wanted to come the opportunity. You know, if they had commitments on certain nights, we had three different evenings. They were held at the Oconomowoc Community Center, and we gave a formal presentation, which was the booklets which you all have. And then we had open questions afterwards, and we also had display boards of every single page of the booklet surrounding the room so people could look up close at each page, take pictures, ask specific questions as they liked. The first meeting, we had around a dozen people come. The second meeting, we had just over 20. And then last night, we had another probably just over a dozen. And these people were all very interested. They're people that really care about Oconomowoc, and they came and asked many good questions. And they were surprised at how forthright we were in answering because there was nothing that was off limits. I mean, we were completely transparent. And two of the sessions, we actually got clapping at the end, which was such a nice surprise. So. No, I think they were clapping because they were happy with the presentation and our answers. But that's a good point. Also, a couple other updates. I provided for the council based upon the mayor's request some additional information. One was on comparable sales between fourth and fifth floor, which you guys have. And then also, I provided a diagram of the proposed bathrooms. And we're happy to answer any questions you have on that or anything else. And then John is also going to provide some technical updates.
A quick question. In those last three meetings, were most people that went different? Were they the same people, a lot of the same people?
They were all different people.
Great.
I don't think we had any duplicates other than Alderman Cloth came to two of the meetings, I think.
Thank you.
If you can, we always get, obviously, the positives. Been, out of the people that showed up in the last couple of meetings, have you had? I mean, what were some of the, just out of curiosity, you know, what were some of the negatives? And do you have a percentage, you know, out of 20 people that showed up, we had two really didn't like it, they hated it? Or, you know, do you have a sense of that?
Yeah, I would say that there were a number of people that came, and they even said this because it was a very open atmosphere, and they said this in front of the whole group. A number of people came and they said they were skeptical coming in, but at the end, they were supporting it. Some people actually vocally said that. They asked very good questions, very specific questions. I think the one thing that comes to the top of my mind, there was a concern about parking and how far people would have to walk to the new development. Other than that, I think that was it. And we also had MSI reps at all the meetings, so John, maybe you can add to this as well.
Well, good thing, before you leave the stand, I think it was a good job. Out of all the projects we've had in town since I've been on council, I think you guys have done the most outreach that I'm aware of. I think, follow like Village did one or two, I mean, you guys have done a lot. So I applaud you for that. I think that was the right thing to do.
Thank you. Yeah, well, we recognize it's right in the heart of the downtown, so it's highly visible, and we want to do it right. So, thank you.
Fair, thanks, Jeff. I'll add, John Coots, MSI General. We had at those listening meetings, I think, majority of the questions, at least at the ones I was at, were more informational, just really trying to clarify exactly what the project was. And to Jeff's point, we had a number of people that just said, hey, we really appreciate understanding what the project is. It's not exactly what we thought the project was coming into this meeting based on what we had heard. And so that was really the goal of those meetings, to educate, listen, and give feedback or answers where we could. So, but as far as technical updates from the last time we met, I felt odd not coming in with a new packet for all of you. So I think that speaks to a lot of the work that's been going on to the point where we have a good submittal for consideration. But we have continued to work on the technical side of things with our engineers. Everybody's getting engineering time slotted towards continuing to work on this project. We were able to come up with some better ideas for the electrical infrastructure with the Oconomowoc utilities. So that was a plus as far as a location that made sense inside the building. Doesn't reflect anything on the outside. It's just more of a good checkmark on the project. And then one thing that was probably a pretty consistent comment at the listing sessions and also just our interaction throughout the community as a company. Lot of concern or questions or comments about the Village Green. And we have been consistent in telling people that we have not designed the Village Green. We have not come up with a final plan. There are a lot of great concepts on how to improve it. We want to be a part of that. We want to support it through this project. But no one's coming in with a plan right now that this is exactly what needs to happen on the Village Green. So our team's been very consistent sharing that with people. I've told them, you know, here's the different things that have been discussed as far as improving it and making it even better than it is now, certainly reconfiguring it possibly to make it an even more usable green space and also a more secure space for the community. But beyond that, that particular part of the project, if the part of that project goes forward, that will be a collaborative effort with the city, and it is on city property. And so it will follow city guidelines for that part of the project. So just wanted to share that with the council. I think that's been maybe one of the biggest still kind of unknowns that we hear on the construction and design side. And we've tried to have a consistent response to everybody on that. And that's been received favorably from everybody that we've talked to, so.
Like to open up to the council for questions for any of the applicants. Alderman Spiegelberg.
You said, you said a lot of people came in with a certain perception and left with a new perspective, basically. What were some of those perceptions that you had from your standpoint that you heard?
As far as our perceptive of what they were telling us or the questions?
You said they came in with a certain perception or knowledge of what they thought was knowledge of the project.
Yeah.
But then when they left, you felt like they had a different perspective, probably more informed. So what were some of those things that people were coming in with?
Sure. One lady, Mary Claire, was at the meetings, and she got a lot of the names. I'm not the best with names, but one lady actually got up and said, I came in here very skeptical, ready to really kind of oppose this project. And I have to say that I now understand and support the project. And I'm going to go, you know, speak differently about this project with people that I interact with. Paraphrasing a little bit, but that was essentially what she said. I think the architecture and the height and the context of the building in that area of downtown was certainly a part that we had a lot of good feedback, that they understood it. We also printed each of those sheets on full two-foot-by-three-foot boards so people could really get up and look at them closely. And I think that was very helpful to help them understand the scale, at least as best we could represent, you know, with our computer-generated graphics of how this would look. So that was, I would say that was a pretty consistent comment back from those that spoke in that regard, that they really appreciated the architecture, or at least the design intent of the architecture in that location. And they at least understood the height and the reasoning behind the height. So, because we get it, those have certainly been hot-buttoned or talked about, more talked about issues than other parts of the project.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
To kind of answer Karen's question, from the people that I talked to in those two nights and kind of piggybacking off of what you said, the three big things were, you know, kind of understanding the TIF, the building height, and the 18 feet on Village Green. You know, because they hear 70 feet, then they don't see the rest of it. They hear 18 feet, we're losing, but then they don't hear the rest of it. You know, they hear TIF, we're going to take money from taxpayers, then they learn what a TIF is. So I think that's kind of what Jeff and, you know, John mean by people walk in going, I'm against it for these reasons, and then they leave because then they understand it.
Alderman Kavieski.
The Village Green design you touched on, I think is really important.
Can you speak in the microphone, please?
I think it's really important for everybody to take away from this project moving forward that it is not fully designed and that it is city property and it will be a city project, that money associated with the increment from your project will go to help pay for. So as part of what we have to discuss is what that process looks like for what the Village Green looks like and how that applies to the budget that's associated with it and how that becomes a reality. I think you guys have done a great job with educating the community, this body as it's been, this project's been going through the transformations since last fall. And that'll be another element that has an expectation associated with it within the community that we will need to remain as proactive in communicating as we have been previously moving forward. So I just, that's going to be a big, big thing for this community because it's the heart of the downtown or heart of Lake Country. And the proper design of that is going to be something that you don't want to own from political side, and that's something that this body and Park and Rec and all the departments will need to come together on. So I just want to make sure that as we go into the next parts of this, that we remain very cognitive of that.
Yeah, well said.
Any further questions for the applicants? Okay, at this time, I'm going to read two of the closed session items before we make a motion to go into closed session. On your agenda, it's item 2B, which is Rockwell Partners LLC redevelopment project and TIF request. Per Wisconsin State statutes 19.851E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specific public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Public-private partnership for the Rockwell Partners LLC redevelopment project plan and TIF requests. Our next item that we're going to discuss is the Fleet Farm Assessment Claims for 2021 and '22 per Wisconsin State statute 19.851G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or likely to become involved. The Fleet Farm Assessment Claims 2021 and 2022. Like to entertain a motion to go into closed session. I'm moved. All in favor?
Aye. Nope.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick. Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
We're going to head into the room behind us for closed session. And then for those in the audience, we will be back to reconvene and address item 2E and F We're now reconvening into open session. We've closed the closed session. Moving on to without objection, we're going to start with a presentation of the 2023-2027 Capital Improvement Budget, followed by Consider and Recommend Resolution 22-R 3051, authorizing the execution of the use of ARPA funds for the public sales-led service line replacement, public side, excuse me. Ms. Sullivan-Murray.
I am almost ready here. Okay, so tonight is just a, we're going to start our capital budget process. Tonight, you get an overview of the capital plan. We have a workshop scheduled for next week, Tuesday. I've got workbooks for you tonight so that we can, you know, so we can get this process started. So the capital improvement plan is what provides the outline to the city for the overall capital investment needs for the next five years. So we're going to lay out the possible projects and the funding solutions for the projects for each year. When we take a look at the requests, I put them in a summary form for you for this. I also have a copy of this PowerPoint for you that is in your folder for when we're finished. But the summary plan shows the capital, we're starting with the utilities here by the utility. So you can see how much each year for wastewater, water, and electric. And then it breaks it down by the type of capital with its infrastructure, buildings, equipment, other, and then their funding source. The utilities are the easiest ones to show on here because their funding source is generally their reserve funds. There is some debt borrowing for the water utility as well. When we look at this, when we look at this, the same, the utility reserve balances, basically, I throw this up here so that you can see that they do have the reserves available to pay for their capital projects. For the general fund, we do the same thing, so there's capital by fund. The biggest part of the capital is general capital projects. But then there's also some TIF capital projects, some for the fleet and for park, park impact fees and the technology fund. And again, it's separated by type, so you can see if it's infrastructure, buildings, or grounds, fleet, that kind of thing. And then the funding sources, and that's where we spend a lot of time during the capital project budget. Our main funding sources for capital are property tax levy, debt, our reserves. This year, we've got ARPA funds to also look at, TIF fundings and grants, donations, that kind of thing. So that'll all come together as we're taking a look at each project. One of the things that we focus on a lot during this budget time is how much levy dollars are going into the capital budget. So this is a list of all of the capital requests in the levy budget. And, oh, the total's not on here. It's on the next page, so I'll look at it with you. But the total requests here are over $3 million. What we have levy available is about $2.3 million. And I show you this every year because every year, our capital requests are more than the levy dollars that we have available. So what we've been doing in the past is finding things that maybe we don't need to do this year and then kind of push them out into the following years. And so what happens is it keeps building these other years up higher and higher. And so we're going to take a look at that a little bit on this budget round, too, because what we're hoping to do is to look at a couple of new funding sources to help alleviate some of the pushbacks that we've been doing. One of the biggest things that we have to deal with when we're looking at levy for capital, available dollars that we have right now is about $2.3 million. That has bumped up from 1.5 over the years since I've been here, okay? We do have this list that I showed you last year as well that are annual capital expenses that we spend every year, every year. And those dollars are a little bit higher than they were last year when I showed them to you, and that's just because prices going up. But that takes up about $2 million of the $2.3 million that we have available, meaning everything else on the capital plan, there's $300,000 left for that. So we're talking about how do we solve some of this? So we take a look at what do we have for funding sources for general fund capital. First of all, we talked about the levy. We use about $2.3 million. How does our levy dollars grow? Only through net new construction, okay? This is net new construction over the years since 2011. Last year and this year are pretty, pretty close, 2.28. Think it's going to be 2.33 this year. We don't have the exact number yet, but that's the estimated number for this year. So every year, as we grow, as the city grows, our equalized value gets bigger and bigger. So it takes more construction to get a percent. So that's why it looks like it's lower, but our equalized value is over, you know, over $2 billion now. So it takes a lot of construction to get those percentages. So 2.3% of net new construction means that our city grew by $65 million of new construction. That's not value like your house increased value, that's only new construction, okay? And what does that translate to in dollars? So in our $14 million budget, that translates to $235,000. And that's for our entire operating budget, yes.
Can I ask a couple of questions as we go through real quick? That new value doesn't fully include Olympia, the project over by the YMCA?
No, no, it has to have been built as of January 1st.
I just want, if anybody's, all of that new construction that everybody is watching right now isn't realized in these numbers?
This was construction that happened in '21. It had to have been there as of January 1st, 2022, and we use that for the 2023 budgets. There's always a lag there, okay? Impact fees is another source that we use for capital. Current, and everyone always wants to know is what's the current balance in the impact fees? So I've got that there for you. So the transportation utility, and that was for building the Thackeray Trail Extension. So $663,000. We don't have any further expenses for that one. We're just paying that one down right now. Law enforcement is always in the positive, but at the end of the year, we take those dollars right there. Actually, we take what we've collected through the end of July and apply it to next year's debt service. So it'll go back down to zero, and then we'll build it up again. And then the park facilities, which really makes me happy, we're at about $430,000 in the, in the, in the hole, in the minus right now. But last year, we were at one point, or early last year, we were at $1.2 million. So that's coming around. There's been a lot of residential building, which helps bring that back and allows us to continue doing projects with the parks' impact fees.
The major reason that that's in the negative is associated with Northeast Regional Park?
For all the upfront costs that we had on Northeast Region, yep. Another source of funding is debt financing. We use debt financing for, you know, long-term projects. It's used for infrastructure that lasts at least 10 years generally when we borrow. We borrow for a 10-year period unless it's, unless it is a project that would have more than a 20-year life and we want to extend it out that long. So this picture here is, the blue is where our debt service is at. The gold is how much we're allowed, what our debt borrowing capacity is. So as you can see, we're still sitting in really good shape with that. And I think we've done a good job going through and taking a look at that. We're going to be looking at street projects when Mark's back and probably for next year, looking more at a street project plan for debt. But I just wanted to let you know where we're at. This year, we borrowed dollars for 2022 and 2023, so I'm not planning any city borrowing for 2023.
Our debt is issued through bond at a fixed rate as well, correct?
Yep, you know, upfront what it is, what our payments are for the 10 years, yep.
Some of the questions, I, just to refresh and for whatever reasons.
Yep, nope, that's fine.
People need to know, we're not going to be experiencing a variable rate associated with that.
Yeah, any interest changes that happen right now isn't going to affect any of the debt that we already have. Those rates are fixed and set. Fund balance, we've talked a lot about fund balance lately and the unassigned fund balance and what it's growing to. So as you can see, our unassigned fund balance is growing up really close to $5 million right now. So one of the things, you know, we have a 25% reserve, that's the purple. That's what we don't touch. This is used to help us offset those impact fees that are in the negative. It helps us do projects ahead of time if we need to get started on something before we borrow. We use it for cash flow. But the amount that we have there right now, I've heard you, we've talked about it. And in this capital plan, we are looking at a, recommending a planned spend down of some of the capital, of some of the fund balance to help us catch up with some of the capital that we've been pushing off. And you'll see that as we're moving along.
Lori, one of the.
Wait, what does, what does that mean?
So it means that we have the $4.9 million of unassigned fund balance. And Mark and I and the mayor talked about it. And we are looking at proposing, and I'll show you in the plan as it comes up, proposing a spend down of $2 million over the next, over the next five years. So that's $400,000 a year, which would help offset, you know, some of that capital that we keep pushing back. Now, it's a $2 million spend down over five years. However, the actual effect of that won't be a full $2 million spend down. So there's flexibility in there because, and I'll show you, let me keep going on the slides.
Can I ask a question, though, just in general, very briefly about just that? And I've been on this for a few years. Obviously, we've been putting money away into this reserve fund for years. And as a taxpayer, I look at the amount of unassigned money, which is almost $5 million. And in my head, I said, that means we've been overtaxed for years.
Yeah.
We're budgeting for things we're not actually doing or we're saving money, and then we're not giving the taxpayer a break. We're just putting it in this rainy day fund. I would like to see an evaluation during this budget cycle over the last four or five years of how much we've been putting in out of departments and how much we're putting in as a city into that unassigned.
Yep, I actually have it. I've got it for you for your books. So you can see for the last, I think I went back to 2016 because that's how long I've been here. How much goes in, how much we've used.
But you've said, like, you know, we don't always have enough money for the capital funds every year, and yet we've been funding this, you know, reserve account essentially.
Right, and so that's why we're saying this.
We have to figure out some way to.
Let's do something with this.
It also has to do with the net new construction because you want to take advantage of the net new construction when you can because there will be years where we won't be able to, so.
Right, well, that's part of the debate, but the other part of the debate is $5 million, right? I mean, we have $5 million sitting in there that we don't need.
And my.
So whether it's the net new construction, extra money.
And I think, guys, these are all the discussions we'll go into the workshop.
Exactly.
I want to try to stay focused because you'll receive your booklet and all this stuff this evening.
Like I said, this is an overview. These are things that we want to discuss at the workshop. But yeah, absolutely, what we're looking at here is putting together a plan that helps us, helps us catch up on some of the capital that we've been pushing off and using these unassigned reserves. Because that reserve, once you use it, it's gone. It's not a operating expense, it's a capital expense, yep.
And what's proposed is just a proposal for you guys to work on in the workshop. That's what Lori's put together as she normally does.
So I have a question and a request because if it's going in the workshop, hopefully, this is a good time for that. $4.9 million is flexible unassigned overage or reserve, right? And we use that instead of potentially. And we use that instead of potentially going to the bank for a short-term operating. So I'd like to understand how much that is, because there was a, one time the city had to do that.
Yeah.
We haven't had to do that in a long time, so we haven't had to pay interest on those short-term notes, we haven't had to even worry about that. So I'd love to see what the recommendation is based on historical number. For what that flex spend is, if it's not already in there. Because that'll help determine, for me at least, where that spend down comfort level should be.
Yeah, so, and then at the end of all of this, what I'm hoping will come out of this, Matt, is a fund balance policy. So at the end of the year, when we have an overage or, you know, we don't always, we don't always get to put money in the bank. Every once in a while, we want more than we thought we were going to. But if it is there, we need to have a policy for what we're gonna do with it. And so that's all gonna come through the workshop process, okay?
Thank you.
So right now, this is what it's been looking like. So this was in 2019, we were at 4.5, we were at 4.7, now we're at 4.9. So with a planned spend down, we can bring this down and we can talk about how far you want to bring it down based on the information that I bring you. The one thing that, when we'll talk about fund balance too, at the end of the year when we have dollars that we're putting into fund balance, 85% of the time is because we had revenues that came in higher than we expected. It's not because we didn't spend the dollars that we need to for expenses, but it's because a lot of buildings started happening in the city and we got a lot of permit revenues or, you know, fees, things like that. But we'll look at it. One other thing that we want to talk about, because this is a funding source that we need to talk about, and that's our ARPA funding. So Economax, ARPA funding, we got 1.777 million dollars. So we are tasked to figure out how we're going to use these dollars and get them spent, at least contracted for by the end of 2024 and completely spent in 2025. So we have a recommendation for that. I put some information in here for you about ARPA funding and its eligible uses. So there's certain things that are called out in the, in this, in this bill that they would like you to spend money on, and one of them is on the abatement of lead in cities. And so you'll see a proposal to use some of the ARPA dollars for that. One of the things that they changed, which helped us all out a lot, and that change happened in, it was January, February earlier this year, where they decided that instead of you going through this big formula and trying to figure out if you lost revenue during COVID or whatever, everyone gets a standard allowance of up to $10 million that they can spend on government services throughout the period of performance, which really means by the end of 2024, okay? So it's not $10 million, it's however much you've got up to $10 million. All of ours qualifies for that, so we don't have to get real particular on the reporting. This makes it a little bit more flexible. What they're saying now is that you can use these dollars for maintenance, infrastructure, roads, cybersecurity, environmental remediation. Basically, whatever a government service spend would be is allowed. What's not allowed?
Not operational.
Yeah, yeah, and you know, they don't say can't be operational, but every finance director walking around is saying, don't forget, if you try to use it for operational, what are, how are we gonna pay for it next year? So it's one-time money, we want to look at, for the most part, we want to look at one-time spending, okay? There are ineligible uses, and I just put them in there quick for you. You are not allowed to offset taxes with the, with ARPA funds. You're not allowed to contribute to your pension liability, which is a line in your financial statement. You are not allowed to use the dollars to pay debt service. You're not allowed to replenish your surplus funds. Those are the things you're not allowed to do, okay? So recommended in the plan for you to consider as we move forward with the capital plan is, and the very next little presentation you're gonna get is on the lead service replacement, but funds up to 700,000 for the lead service replacement. And then we have in the capital project funding for '23 and '24, 600,000 and 400,000 for a total of 1.7 million. Uh, leaves a little bit here, but you guys can be flexible with these numbers too. It's up to you. This is what we are recommending to at least move forward and start the conversation.
And understand that the 700,000 for the lead laterals is this calendar year.
Yes, then Scott will get into that in just a minute. So I'm gonna give you your books, we're gonna meet, we're gonna talk about how these things get pushed over the years and what we need to do in order to try to, try to fix that or, you know, get our, get us back where we need to be. We're gonna look at '23 and '24 for a couple of reasons. We usually do one year at a time, I want to do two. It's the ARPA funding period for one thing. It's also because of the lead times on equipment and the fact that if we need to fund it in '24, we probably need to order it now or in '23, okay? So with that, I'm gonna see you on the 26th. I will give you your workbooks, take a look at them, bring them with you next week. We meet at 6 o'clock, okay?
Thank you, Laurie.
Go ahead, I'll get this ready for the next thing. Or I would if I could. Get the mouse to go there.
Still the lead lateral. So now we'll move on to our next item, which is Consider and Recommend Resolution 22-R3051, authorizing the execution of the use of ARPA funds for the public side lead service line replacements.
Ivan, how do I get it to look normal to me? Normal there. Looks different here.
You're in presenter mode, that's why. Oh, wait, where's the play button?
All right, yeah, thanks.
Good.
Here tonight to talk about lead service line replacement program. Goals for tonight, what's a lead service line? Where is all our lead? We're gonna show you what we've done with our GIS and our inventory for public and private side laterals. Give you an update on, this is year two of our lead service line program. We'll talk some more about the funding sources that Laurie just touched on, and we'll begin. So what is a lead service line? If you, if you don't know, right, there's, there's a larger water main in the middle of streets, there's a small diameter line that goes from that water main all the way into your house to the water meter. Half of that is owned by the city. We own from the middle of the street to a curb stop valve in your, in your yard. The homeowner owns from that curb stop valve into their, into their home, into their basement. So yeah, so it's, so it's half and half, it's kind of different sewer lateral, homeowner owns everything, the water, it's, it's half-half. Where are they? For the most part, it's, it's homes built before the 60s, it's in the middle of our system, we're, we're the oldest. We've been trying with our GIS system in the last year and a half here, trying to confirm our assumptions of lead. We've been doing that with direct mailings, door hangers, we've been going out and hydro excavating the curb stops, we can see both sides. We, we've got lots of stuff on our website and we've got a self-identifying app on the GIS that people can identify things. Public Service Commission makes our utility accountant every year now tell not only public side information, but customer side information. So this is, this, these are our lead laterals, we, you know, we've got not, almost 900 and almost 1,200 on, on the customer side. I guess just to, just to back up, a lot of the communities that are in the lead service line program are, are in it because they have a, a lead exceedance. We, we currently do not, we remain in compliance with our DNR sampling. Part of how we mitigate lead in the pipes is we, we add a, a chemical orthophosphate, it basically kind of slicks the inside of the pipe, doesn't allow lead or other things to, to leach out into the water. We take 30 samples every three years at DNR-approved lead and copper sites. Our last samples were in 2020 and we had a reported value of 9.0. If you're, if you're around, if you're above 15, then you, then you failed your lead and copper and you go down a, a different route. We're, we're being proactive with our, our program, trying, trying to get money and receive money to, to get rid of those, even though we don't have a problem and it's, and it's not mandatory. So our next sampling cycle is actually April of '23. We'll go through the, the same 30 sites and hope for the similar results. GIS inventory, we, we have a, I'm showing you the, two things here. One, we've got a exhibit that shows where all our lead is. Again, it's kind of, it's similar to the, to the exhibit we showed previous, but now it's all GIS, it's very smart. In fact, this is, this is our dashboard and this specifically shows the utility side and the customer side over here, all of the different types of material. Down here, it, it shows how many laterals are in each aldermanic district. We, we can go, we can go on afterwards at, at the end if we want, we can click on these and you can actually see in your district how much lead is, is in your district. And it, it touches all, all four districts. So nobody is immune from at least getting the word out and letting people know we've, we've got a, a program to help you get rid of it. How, how do you become part of the, the program? Basically, you, you want to confirm that your house has a lead lateral. Once we do that, and we can do that again by the, the self-identifying app, people have been sending us pictures or they're, they're calling me up, setting an appointment, our water operators are visiting their basement and identifying it that way. Once they're confirmed lead, they're, they're in the program, they call me for details or I, I put at your stations, that's the information on the program. Basically, they, we, we've pre-qualified a couple of contractors that do all this work. So we, we vetted them, we interviewed them. We, we have, we have two very active pre-qualified contractors. And basically, if you use one of those, you're eligible for the DNR money and it's gotta be done sometime this year to be eligible for it. The, the cost, the grant money does not cover 100% of the cost, it's about 75%. We've worked, we're working with Exonia Bank, they would take whatever the grant doesn't cover and they would float that for up to five years at a, at a percent and a half interest. So people are taking advantage of that. Last year, we replaced 71 and about a dozen people took advantage of, at some term with Exonia Bank. Year two, we were in front of council a few months ago, we had, had a resolution to accept $600,000 of DNR grant money. We're targeting 200 private lead service lines that would, if they're use a pre-qualified contractor, they, we, we can pay that contractor $3,000. We sent out letters to, to all the assumed leads, lead service lines, over 900 letters, and basically asking people to, to call us and help confirm, update our GIS and, and get in the program if, if they want to. One of the important parts is, on the private side, if you have a lead lateral, you're, you're in the program, but it doesn't, it, it depends what do you have lead on the public side. And for the most part, a lot of these circles are red-red, that's lead on our side, lead on their side. The program doesn't, because it's not a mandatory program, we don't know who's gonna be part of the program. It's whoever calls us, responds to our letters, confirms that they're lead. But if there's public side lead, when they do their private side, we have 45 days to do our side and we've got to find a way to pay for it. So in this year's budget, we, we have $350,000 in our utility budget to pay for that. The other portion are, we call them partials, it's, it's areas that we've went and did our road program and we've replaced our portion of the lead. They still have lead on their, on their portion back when we didn't have grant money, when we went through and did road programs, yeah, people didn't want a $5,000 bill, so they just passed and they have, they have lead. These are, these are preferred to us because it, it doesn't affect our budget, doesn't put a hole in the road, doesn't replace a sidewalk square. So we are really targeting, we've estimated 250 of, of those big totals are partials. We're making an extra effort with letters and door hangers to those, to, to try to get those signed up and, and those replaced this year. Grants are limited. Again, we've talked about it's not mandatory. Every year, we apply again for DNR grants. I've done it for eight years, we only got money last year and this year. And, and again, on the private side, we can't use any public funds to, to do private side. So funding sources on the private side, the DNR grants that we talked about, the supplementary, supplemental funding from Exonia Bank. And then on the public side, again, we had $350,000 in our utility budget. We're, we're gonna talk about the ARPA funds and I've got a resolution to, to spend some of that. The other ways, we, we've got our ears out, we're listening to different webinars and in different areas that there, there may be other funding sources. We'll keep our fingers crossed and keep our ears open to that. So tonight, yep, we're, we'll have a resolution that we'll bring to council, hopefully with a positive recommendation here, to spend up to 700,000 of that ARPA money. I guess, are there any questions? I brought demo stuff, three different kinds of, of pipe, I brought our meter set. If you want to talk about it or have questions about it, we'll be happy to, to talk about it.
Any, any questions or comments from council? Alderman Kavieski.
Couple of questions for you. How many areas, so we're talking about laterals, obviously laterals attached to the mains. Do we have any main lead?
Nope, no, the, the main line, water main is not lead, none of it.
None of them?
Nope.
All right. Is there anything we can do from a policy standpoint that would even help this further, like creating a lead-free community policy?
I mean, that, that would be one of the ways. If, if we fail our lead and copper test, right, that, that's the road, you would have a mandatory ordinance. Right now.
Prior to that, right? And that may open up additional funding sources if we declare that we're a lead-free community?
Um, it, it could, I don't, Laurie, do you want to speak to that? I mean, we've, we've heard different things. To me, they're changing the program up. They've told us starting next year, so we don't really know how that program is, is gonna be set up.
It's a little hard for us right now because the DNR is changing the rules on the program. When they first started out last year when we got dollars, it was like, this program's gonna be going on for several years, get it done now. So we, first of all, we're gonna come to you with a complete program for the city and probably use every ARPA dollar we have. But now that they've pulled that back and said, you know, now we don't know if we're even gonna get money next year, we're also looking at just trying to take care of what we can with the dollars that we have moving forward. Because if we have a mandatory ordinance, then we have to put together, and I think you did, it was like $5 to $7 million of city money we'd have to have to do that.
But if I, I remember correctly, that direction would potentially, again, the, the shift of the policies above us determine where this money would come from. But if we were to do an ordinance like that, it could make those funds available. If we don't have an ordinance like that, they wouldn't be available.
I would say there would be an advantage to having the ordinance for looking for funds, whether or not we qualify, because one- Because one of the biggest problems that we have with some of those funding sources isn't the lead because we haven't failed the test, right? If we failed the test, that would be different. But one of the other problems that we have is we just don't meet the income requirements for most of the grant funding.
A community standpoint, but there are some people who live in homes that have lead laterals that really can't afford to do that.
Alderman Mulder?
So I'm not at all suggesting we don't want to handle this problem. But help me understand, we have a mitigation effort in place, and we meet standards by a relatively simple solution of adding a chemical to the water to prevent the leaching. Continue to do that and continue to remain within compliance. What's the urgency that we would want to take all of our ARPA money, for instance, and put it at this, and we have so many different competing priorities in the city? What's the urgency to really get this done versus letting it trickle out over years?
That's a great question, I guess, right? Lead is definitely a buzzword since Flint the last few years, right? The more research you do on lead, lead is something that accumulates in your body. So I get calls from people, you know, "I've lived in this house forty years, and nothing's wrong." Well, to me, that's not a great example because, yeah, you've been drinking lead-laden water, you know, and there are people that, no, I don't flush it first before. So it's being proactive and realizing that, you know, it's not a health issue here because we haven't failed, but we're very close, right? We're knowingly giving people water with lead content in it. And I guess that, to me, that's the main reason. Joe, do you have another reason? To me, that's my reason to...
Basically, we want to get to zero. I mean, we're within compliance, and we don't feel that that's acceptable for our community. I mean, and I agree with that, is that basically where we're at?
Yeah, and the way to do it with the street program, I mean, we wouldn't get lead, rid of lead for thirty years. I mean, it would be a very slow process. But then on the flip side, Laurie's right, right? We looked at a five-year program to get rid of it. Five to seven, that was on the light side. I remember eight to ten million dollars to get rid of all the lead. So I mean, that's...
Alderman Shellpepper?
So we're using, is it seven hundred grand for ARPA then, that you're requesting?
Right.
And that's only for the public side, right? So that wouldn't be used for any of the grants?
We have six hundred thousand for the private side.
We have six hundred for that, for the grants. And that's the same amount we had last year, with six hundred?
No.
Last year, we had two hundred thousand.
Okay. Are we going to use up that six hundred, and we're going to have a lot more extra people that are asking for more kind of thing? I mean, or is that six hundred going to spread out pretty well? I mean, how did it work last year with the two hundred? Do we have people asking for it that didn't get it?
We had, we gave back money last year because it got late in the year, and we didn't do two hundred. Last year, we did seventy-one, and we had money for...
So how come we couldn't have just given like more money than, like to those individuals who did want it? You know, how come we have to max it at three? Do we have to max it at three, or is that early?
Yeah, you set up your program early on to say, how much money are you going to give? Are you giving fifty percent, seventy-five percent, a hundred percent?
Well, I'd like to see it, I guess that's my take, is like, okay, we're not even spending all the money we had in this grant money, and this is a very vital and important program. Like, we should be doing a hundred percent if we can, or fifty percent, or, you know, because what's the number right now? Is it fifty, basically? Is that like a three thousand would be about fifty?
It's about a five thousand dollar cost, and the grant pays three.
If you do it all, right, you're going to get that many less done for the money that you have.
But that's the thing, we're not getting them done, though. That's like my thing, is we're sending money back to the state.
But you don't know that when you set up your program.
Yeah, well, maybe we'll keep a close eye on it again this year, see how it goes. And I guess next year, things, you know, might happen, we not get it at all, the grant money. But if we have ARPA funds, we can use for it. I think it's an important program. When I was out knocking on doors, I have heard from multiple people that asked me about it. So I'd like to see us, you know, help people, if we can, with the grant money.
Doc can give you a report of all of the residences in your own territory, in your own, you know, divisions there, so you can see where it is. Encourage people to use, we've got dollars.
Right.
Alderman Kavieski?
Ultimately, to Alderman Mulder's point, it would be nice to have our community at zero lead, remove the additive, become a lead-free community. It's in the public interest from a health standpoint, even though we're not above the threshold. It's proactive, we're like fifteen percent, thirteen percent left.
Yes.
I guess statistically, it's not dramatic, but to those homes that it's serving, it's important. So I know we're not talking about all of that right now. I'm supportive of providing the ARPA funds to assist in this time right now, but it's definitely going to be something ongoing over the next several years, and we should keep our eyes and ears on it and be as proactive as we can.
What might be nice is a report after the first of the year that can give us a progress report. I think that's what I'm hearing from the council. If we could do that, that would be wonderful. I'd like to entertain a motion for a recommendation.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any further discussions or comments or questions? Alderman Spiegelberg?
I would just say to Alderman Shellpepper's point, that I think tonight will be a good impetus forward with educating people that this is available. And I think also getting to zero lead also takes that other chemical out of the water. Because I can't believe that chemical that's in there coating the pipes, I can't believe that there's no residual that's getting into our water, and it's probably something that's not safe either in our water.
It's definitely safe in the water. It's an NF sixty safe pipe. We wouldn't get rid of our orthophosphate. You would still add orthophosphate. Orthophosphate slicks the pipe for both lead and copper, for anything not to leach out into it. So you wouldn't eliminate that chemical.
You don't like orthophosphate? You don't take a little extra orthophosphate?
It's definitely, it's definitely safe.
Okay, okay.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Douglas?
Aye.
Alderman Rosick?
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski?
Aye.
I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
The moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We're going to switch the computer and then jump into our finance committee right away before we start the council meeting. Sorry for the delay. There will be a five-minute break after the finance committee before the council meeting starts. Because we started pretty early, I want to make sure everybody's in good shape. So the finance committee will start shortly with Chairman Alderman Mulder.
Meeting properly noticed.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it was.
Okay. We have two orders of business. The first is to consider the grants, donations received and budget amendments for the second quarter. Laurie?
Yep, so before you tonight, you have a listing of all of the grants and donations that were received by the city in the second quarter of this year. The total amount of that is two hundred and forty-five thousand, one seventy-eight, with the majority of that, two hundred and twelve thousand going to the pickleball courts that came in. There's other grants here for police training and watershed management. Along with your grants and donations, there is a budget amendment here for the final payment, really, for the Waukesha County Communications Dispatch transition. So it's just that where the quarter ended, these last costs didn't make it before March thirtieth. They're in the second quarter, so that's how they, that's how they're in here, but those are the final costs.
Questions? Motion?
I will make a motion to accept the...
Approve the budget amendments as presented.
Approve the budget amendments as presented, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second is to consider act on the vouchers for June.
Give it to Shellpepper.
First, were there any questions before we act on that? Okay.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the vouchers for June in the amount of four million, eight hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-eight cents.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
For Tuesday, July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, has appropriate meeting notification been made?
Yes, Your Honor, it has.
If you would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Would you call roll, please?
Alderman Douglas?
Here.
Alderman Rosick?
Here.
Alderman Altman-Cloth?
Here.
Alderman Ellis?
Here.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Here.
Alderman Mulder?
Here.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Here.
Alderman Kavieski?
Here.
Under our first item, public hearing, the termination of planned developments. The purpose is to hear public comment on the proposed zoning ordinance text amendment that creates Section seventeen point eight oh four nine pertaining to the termination of planned developments. The text amendment requires approved planned developments to be completed within five years from the date of approval. If uncompleted, the planner may refer to the matter to the City Common Council for termination. The property owner would be provided written notice prior to the formal action. The intent of this ordinance is to remove approved planned development zoning overlay districts from the city's official zoning map that have either not started or are no longer needed the planned development designation. Mr. Gallo, if you could give us a brief overview, and we'll open this for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. You pretty much said it in the introduction of what this ordinance is all about, but I will introduce the public hearing. It's an ordinance that creates regulations for something called planned developments. Planned developments are special zoning regulation, special overlay districts that provide flexibility for projects. Once approved, these overlay districts are then placed on the city's zoning map. This ordinance that you're looking at tonight allows the common council to terminate any planned development district that's not completed within five years. I'm sorry, within seven years. Initially, I wanted it to be five years, but the plan commission did say seven years, so that's what's been changed in your code. The process would require the planning department to provide the property owner thirty days of notice prior to action, and then the owner would be given the opportunity to be heard before the council to, before you take any action on it. Again, initially, I thought five-year construction period and a twenty-day notice to the owner was adequate, but the plan commission did change that to seven years, completion date, as well as a thirty-day notice instead of twenty. The outcome of this ordinance, then, would be removing planned developments that have either not been built or no longer need the special PD overlay. Later tonight, we're going to have a presentation to that discusses all of the approved planned developments. If the proposed ordinance that you have in front of you is adopted, we would then requesting to terminate several PDs in the near future. The plan commission recommended this ordinance to you on July sixth. Again, they changed the outcome. I requested five years. They said, nah, let's make that seven. Five years seems to go by very fast. And also, the notice to the property owners, instead of twenty days, they said, why don't you bump that to thirty-day notice? So anything that, we can't bring this back to you in August because of that thirty-day notice. It would have to be at least September. So that's really what the ordinance is all about. It's creating the ability for the council to terminate these planned developments. I'll be available to answer any questions when this comes on the agenda later this evening.
So at this point, if anyone in the audience has any comments regarding just this topic, this is your time to share your thoughts with the council. I have blue cards, but none of them have the topic with regard to termination of planned developments. Are there any public comments with regard to this public hearing? With no public comments, we're going to close the public hearing, and I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes for June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Go move, Kavieski.
Second, Altman-Cloth?
All in favor?
Aye.
And to comments and suggestions from citizens, this is a time I will call your name. If you could please come up to the podium and speak into the microphone. If you could please come up to the podium and, and speak into the microphone. You have three minutes to share your thoughts regarding any topic with the common council. When you come up to the podium, if you'd not only state your name, but state your address in the, in the village or city where you live, and then let us know your thoughts. So, we're going to start with Bill Zimmerman.
Good evening. Thanks for giving me time to speak. I live at 317 South Concord Road in the city of Oconomok. I've lived in the community for 44 years, been active on other parts of the city, and thanks again for letting me speak my piece. I realized after the fact that we passed, or the city passed, to allow concealed carry in government buildings and the library. My wife, having been involved in many libraries, called me and was just very upset as I was. Concealed carry has its place, but I don't believe it has its place in our public library. We have professional people for that. Concealed carry is for personal protection, not trying to get into some kind of altercation in a library. I think, or I would ask the community to rethink this, because this is a life and death decision you're making. It really is. So, in consideration, I'd request you'd consider at some time a referendum for the city and let the city residents vote on something that's as important as this. Thank you.
Thank you. And for, just for clarity, it's the library board that made the decision for the library, not this governing body. No, and I understand. I just want to make sure the public knows that. John Norcross.
Good evening. John Norcross, Deer Creek Court, town of Oconomok. Building on the comments from the previous speaker, I'd like to take this, my theme, "You're Awesome" discussion about getting the lead out, but in a different context. I wish to comment on a pair of votes made in quick succession regarding concealed weapons in public buildings locations, which now include our public library. My family was also shocked that council and board members voted in favor of more weapons in more public places in Oconomok. We are dismayed by the reasoning, which included variations on NRA talking points about hardened targets and good guys with guns. Neither of these moves by our public officials placed a priority on public safety. They didn't prioritize the needs of the wider community, nor did they take into consideration the interests of employees working in these public buildings. I want to be clear, we do not need to increase the number of places where weapons are acceptable any more than we need to increase the already out-of-control proliferation of weapons themselves. To advocate lobby pressure for and pass policy that increases the number of weapons in a public library, a place for families, based on a belief that it is going to send a message to would-be attackers makes for faulty policymaking. To justify these decisions based on a claim to self-defense is equally misguided. I want to be very clear, while I might try to, and stretch to believe that someone carrying a concealed weapon in a public space might, in extreme circumstances, use it to defend themselves, I have absolutely no faith that the person is trained, capable, willing, or even obligated to protect me or my family or anyone else. In fact, they would likely exacerbate the violence and harm. And I say this with one exception, the, the presence of our law enforcement officers. Adding more people with more weapons to public spaces only adds more risk and danger to our community. Our public image has been tarnished by this vote. Our community is less safe. And one day, as the previous speaker said, I hope we'll find a way to rescind these policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Pavlock.
Good morning, Mayor, council members, alder, alderpersons, and other council meeting attendees. My name is Scott Pavlock, and my wife, Kim, and I reside at 1513 Whalen Drive in the city of Oconomok. We are part of the Prairie Creek Ridge subdivision developed, I believe, by Carrick Construction. I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself and my family, as I believe it is important background information relative, relative to why Kim and I are here this evening. I'm a retired U.S. Army Command Sergeant Major. I retired after 33 years of service culminating at the division and installation command level. I was responsible for millions of dollars of government personnel and equipment. I also worked concurrently for over 33 years as a law enforcement officer and supervisor. I served in several positions, including detective, investigation sergeant, accident investigator, excuse me, lead homicide investigator, dare officer, and many other assignments. In 2020, I decided to retire. After retirement, I worked as a director of the Wisconsin Challenge Academy located at Fort McCoy, Wisconsin. I also worked as a senior army instructor at St. John's Northwestern Military Academy in Delafield. We located a home in Oconomok where we thought we could quietly retire and slow down. May, maybe because I'm nuts, I decided to only consider partial retirement, and I have now returned to law enforcement in nearby city to pay for my dreams, a boat and the other things everyone loves. Also, because my retirement had, had, or home had to allow for my three grandchildren to visit, as my daughter and son-in-law serve in the U.S. Army, and deployment is always a possibility. We purchased our home on Whalen Drive in January and moved in. I should have known that on the day we moved in, the blizzard was a sign of things to come. After dealing with various issues that go with any move, we learned in May, after seeing one broken and muddy sign, that the land was to be rezoned at the end of our street. I emailed an employee from the city's planners' office, who attempted, but could provide very little information. Shortly after, large numbers of trucks were seen, and we learned that 250 homes are to go up, pickleball facilities, I don't know what those are, softball diamonds, and some possible multifamily homes. Truthfully, that doesn't bother me. As indicated, my life is resolved around local, state, and federal politics and budgets. I get growth in a community and understanding what this brings. I also understand personnel costs, tax increases, and service cuts. If you add buildings and businesses, you can increase tax revenue. You can also create future costs and expenses. Here's what I don't understand. 300 to 500 trucks, up to 10 per minute, traveling at high rates of speed down a school-zoned street with children present. Trucks up to five at a time in both directions while children are present. Lines of cars picking up children that can't get out of Meadowview Elementary School, because both sides of the streets are lined with construction vehicles and parents. Cars go head-on into each other, attempting to play Frogger. Drivers getting paid by the load, traveling as high as 50-plus miles per hour. And yes, I know how to tell the speed as a law enforcement officer of over 33 years. These drivers are utilizing cell phones and texting, all of which I have on many videos my wife and I have taken. One photo, which you should have in the packet, shows a mother and baby crossing and literally running on the crosswalk because the truck did not see her. Many onlookers also appear in that photo and video. One sign lying in the dirt near the rear of the construction area tells drivers to quote, "Smile for the camera," as they pass the sign that informs them, "No unauthorized dumping allowed." The sign is depicted in photos I have provided in that packet and is lying in the grass. No information was provided to residents when this phase four or five, depending on what I'm told, was planned. No one even told board members that we would be getting dirt and whatever else delivered and dumped near to our, near to our school and homes. This information received the same answer from school administrators, neighbors, and parent-teacher organization members that I've talked to in the last week. None are happy. According to emails I've received from various board members and other city employees, all the dirt comes from one site, which is an old hotel in the Brookfield area. This is not the case, as I unfortunately followed the trucks in both directions. They are bringing in various rock, dirt, and soil from all over. This comes from being a longtime detective. I have even seen over a dozen Oconomok utility and public works trucks dumping in the area. And yes, some were speeding.
If you can wrap it up as soon as possible.
I'll skip ahead here and just say, I've contacted Alderman Rosick, Alderman's Mulder, and I hope I get these names right, Spiegelberg. I'm grateful for their responses, but in their responses, they've all indicated the same thing to me. They didn't know some of this information. They wanted the public to come forward and state they're upset, they're how they are upset. I can assure you, if you come out into the community and meet with these residents, you will hear what I said today and worse. They're not happy. The future plans are that Whalen Drive will be continued to be used for 300 to 500 trucks, not an exaggeration, in the phases to come. Please do something, or I can only tell you, it's not if, but when. I will see an accident, of which I've investigated dozens of deaths of children and family members, because of the failure of a board or the failure of someone to think what their actions are causing, all on the lines of making a little money. And that's what's happening in this development. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mary Claire Lancer.
Good evening. Mary Claire Lancer, 14550 West Meadowshire Drive, New Berlin. The last time I stood before you, I told you that 301 contacts had been made regarding the Rockwell Partners' proposal, door-to-door public meetings. And at that same meeting, I told you that we were planning to hold three additional meetings where the team would give a presentation, followed by Q and A. That, in fact, has happened, and you've probably seen this ad in the Oconomok Enterprise, and indicated that those meetings were July 12th, July 14, and yesterday, July 18. They were attended by people who really hadn't known much about this previously. Altogether, 46 people attended, so my 301 contacts are now 347. I talked with a lot of people who, as they were leaving, wanted to tell me that they had come to the meeting intending to really dislike what they were going to be looking at and coming away completely different, saying that they were going to talk with their friends and that they really learned that this is what it, what it is, which is very high quality. They were impressed and thought it would be a good addition to the city of Oconomok. In the same ad, it says that people should call me with questions or comments about these meetings or about the project. Since this ad has appeared, which was three times, I received only one call, and that was today, after the last meeting was held. It was someone who said that she's a resident, and she wasn't able to be at the meetings, but a friend of hers was. She's so excited by what this can be, and she wants to know how she can get on the list to live here. So, I continue to be available to people, and I think what happened with these three meetings were 46 people who either weren't aware or had misinformation totally turned a corner. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from the audience? I'm done with the blue cards. Any other comment that anyone would like to make? If you could fill out a blue card, please?
I'll make it quick and brief and give you my blue card. I think we need to take a minute to recognize the member of the community we lost about two weeks ago.
Can you please state your name and your address and where you live?
Sure. Jane Owen, Box 254, Noshota.
Okay.
My family owns property here since about the 1840s. I hope that's good enough for you. We need to take a minute to recognize the member of the community we lost in a fire across the street from the downtown fire station about two weeks ago. Total time from when it came, call came into dispatch, to the first time Western Lakes Fire got across the street, about a 50-yard dash, was over seven minutes. The least we can do is acknowledge and recognize the loss of a community member. I don't know if it's management style, if it's operations procedure. It never should have happened. And to me, all 18,000 population in the city of Oconomok, all stakeholders that own businesses, property, residential business, we all have blood on our hands that we did not prevent this. And let's hope we do something so it never happens again. There's no reason to explain it, to justify it, to excuse it. Regardless if you're a couple blocks away, maybe we're here, the fire stations a couple blocks away and across the railroad tracks, across the street, or somebody who lives at a far suburb away from a fire station. We need to recognize that we lost somebody in this community, and I'm disappointed that nobody stood up to acknowledge that and recognize that so far this evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any further comments from the audience? That he, hearing or seeing anyone, will move on to consent agenda items. The treasurer's report for June of 2022. I'd like to entertain a motion.
Second, Mulder.
All in favor?
Aye.
The committee reports can finance Consider Act on 22, 2022, grant donations received, and the budget amendment for the second quarter for 122 to 63022.
Excuse me. These are second quarter grants and donations and budget amendments to council. There's a list of all the donations in front of you. The donations and grants amounted to $245,178, with a large amount going for the pickleball. There was donations for Chapman Park, and of course, the 2022 fireworks. Included in the packet is a budget amendment for the transition to the Waukesha County Communications. That's the final payment for that. Questions?
Like to entertain a motion?
Go move. Shellpepper.
Rosick, second.
Any further comments or questions? Call roll, please.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick. Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Next up are Plan Commission items. First on the docket is Consider Act on the preliminary subdivision plot map for the Prairie Creek Edition Number Six, located on tax key numbers that are located on your agenda. Mr. Gallo.
Thank you. We have a preliminary plat for the Prairie Creek Ridge Number Six subdivision. It's for 230 single-family lots in the northeast part of the city. Currently, it is zoned SR, which is suburban residential. That came before you in March and May of this past year, 2022. There was a couple different pieces that were zoned different, but it consists of 102 acres. The density allows up to three dwelling units per acre. This is consistent with it at 2.1 dwellings per acre. So, the plat is consistent with zoning, as well as the land use plan. We took this to, well, let me talk a little bit more about the plat. It does have connections shown to the adjacent properties. Green Tree Drive, Road 4, Road 5, and Road 8 will all be extended, or at least available to be extended, to the adjacent properties. They're also providing a 40-foot-wide landscape buffer along County Trunk Highway K. This is in addition to the already 50-foot right-of-way that we have from center line, so it'd be 90 feet from center line. So, that's something that we asked for, and they, they complied. The lot sizes themselves in this plat, they range, there's a good range, so it's a variety of lot sizes from 9,800 square feet, which is about .2 acres, all the way up to 43,500 square feet, which is one acre in size. So, and that's Lot 325. So, the average lot size is around 12,000 square feet, which is a little more than a quarter acre, but there is a variety of lot sizes. So, there's a strong demand in the city of Oconomok for housing. This is consistent with the land use plan, as well as the zoning. The Plan Commission did recommend this to you with a positive recommendation. The Plan Commission did talk about a variety of topics. They talked about the number of parking stalls for the Northeast Regional Park. They did show one bay of like 20, and the Plan Commission said, "We really want to see more parking shown, even though that's going to be a city expense, we want that to be well aware, that people are aware that parking's going to be going in." So, they bumped it up in an exhibit that was included in your thing after the Plan Commission meeting. We, we got them to provide an exhibit of five bays with 20 stalls each. It's 100 parking stalls for the Northeast Regional Park. There's also a shared parking agreement with the school district, but these would be additional stalls. We also are promoting walkability and connectivity in all our subdivisions. So, we asked the applicant to provide an exhibit of what kind of trails, you know, are you putting in for walking? They, they're putting in sidewalks on both sides of every street. There's also an existing walking trail around the Northeast Regional Park, and there's going to be a connection in the southwest corner. Someday, we'd like to connect the Meadowview School up there, that's existing, all the way to Nature Hill School. So, we're looking at that as well. So, that exhibit was provided, and then the last piece that the Plan Commission talked about was a cell tower that's adjacent to the subdivision. We have a thing with a fall zone, and when that cell tower was approved, they had exhibits and letters, signed letters from their professional engineer that this cell tower would be constructed in a way that it would, if in, in the event of a catastrophe, they, they really don't fall over, but in, we had hurricane winds or tornadoes, it would collapse upon itself. There'd be a flange or a hinge in the center, and it would just kind of drape down upon itself. It wasn't built that way, so we are working with the cell company tower that recently bought that tower. They had no idea that it was supposed to be built that way, and they've given us some verbal assurances, and I've been working with the city attorney on this, that they will bring that tower into compliance. So, the fall zone that's shown on the plat with the tower that's 185 feet tall would fall across the street adjacent, that's going to be corrected. We talked to the applicants during the Plan Commission meeting. What's your timing for building? building lots up in that general area?" They said, "We're probably about five years out." So we have some time to correct that. I know we don't want to have a subdivision that has a potential tower going across the road. So that will be addressed. That's the best I can give you on the tower at this point. We have nothing in writing that I'm aware of, but we, this company is looking at various options of, do they move it? Do they reconstruct it? How do they do that? So I'm, that just came of light with this plat, so they're working on their ideas. So with that, the Plan Commission did recommend it. They talked about adding the parking. They wanted to see the trail plan, which you guys have, and then having that cell tower addressed by staff. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any comments or questions from council? Alderman Rosak.
Well, I, overall, I'm in support of the development, but unfortunately, this gentleman didn't stay here today. I think his concerns, this Scott Pavlich, and I did speak with him and exchange some emails with him about access issues, and I, maybe I'm thinking aloud, we know that this issue's been out there for a little while with the amount of trucks going over Wayland Drive. I don't agree with everything he has to say, and I frankly don't think the pictures show what he claims it shows, but I empathize with the amount of trucks going through an already-built area. So when we allow the developers to come in and we start changing these plats, are we telling them they need to find other access except through current residential areas for these trucks? Is that something we're considering? Is that something we're talking with these folks about? Because this is a huge, another section of development, and I think we should have that discussion. I know one of the, I think one of the developers is here, and I don't know which Mike you are by looking at you. That used to be a really good sports show.
I can jump in on this one, Alderman Rosak.
Yeah.
I have spoken with another Alderman on the same topic, and we're going to get together and look at having a committee of the whole meeting to talk about this for all developments. And we're going to need Jason's help with that. So we have some due diligence, and I'm not sure if it's going to happen. It won't happen in the next two weeks, but I'm hoping to have it either later in August or September.
Yeah, and I'm not going to hold up this, because I do disagree with complaints out there, and the gentleman said that we didn't know what we were approving or we were just doing it for money, which is not true. That entire area has been planned for single-family zoning for twenty years. We built a thirty-five-acre park out there for the people that were all going to move in there in the future. So that's completely false, completely wrong, but I do think we should look into, you know, we're not going to alleviate all truck traffic. And in some of the photos this gentleman gave us, actually, some of the trucks there look like they're service trucks building new houses right next door. So, I mean, there's going to be trucks through these areas, but we've experienced some other issues in other areas, and I think we should address that. So I appreciate that, Mayor.
Yeah, and one comment I think would be good is if all the Aldermen have a chance to go down Wayland Drive, it's enlightening when you see the houses that are currently there, to your point, but I'll leave that opinion of my own opinion to have you guys take a look and see that, so we can have a robust discussion. Alderman Mulder.
Yeah, I went, I wish Scott had stayed here next for ten minutes as well, because I had a discussion with him and with the developer, and I went and spent half an hour sitting there. And while I was there, there was one of the current buildings going up, there was a gravel pile in front of that house where, and there were quite a few times where the, all traffic had to come to a stop because there was, there's only one lane because of that, because of construction trucks that were parked there, this gravel pile. I did see, I saw at least two truck drivers texting while they were driving, which is a, you know, scary. I agree with you, Matt. I think that, you know, it's an emotional subject when you buy a half-million-dollar house and you have, you know, not five hundred, but three hundred trucks a day coming in and out during this period. That's going to come to an end probably by the end of the month. I think it's good to have that information out there, but it is true that there will be construction traffic, as it's designed right now, going down there for the next better part of a decade. I mean, there is always going to be construction. It won't be this volume of it, but there's going to be a lot of activity there for years to come. So I think it's an appropriate discussion. Like you, I'm, you know, we've, this was intended to be developed for, you know, low-density and single-family residential. I support that, but the, I think the discussion about all type of residential infill in the city needs to be had, because we have a very similar thing going on in Arrowood, and we'll have a very similar thing going on if Olympia Fields ever develops to the west and anywhere else. We've got a lot of traffic in the city that we need to be thinking about pedestrian and, you know, citizen safety in line with the development.
So that will come as a committee of the whole discussion, because I think we need a little more help from our planning department to try to figure out what other potential options do we have. Alderman Kavieski.
Kind of echoing, but these projects, whether it's in the southwest, southeast with Pats Farms, or northeast, are generally coordinated by one or two developers. It's not necessarily the volume of traffic associated with it, and the way I see it, it's the compliance of already-existing speed limit signs, stop signs, parking on what side of the street it is, and we need some policy to trigger potentially stopping that development until there is compliance. If there is a violation, not directed at you, but those construction activities could take a life, and it probably won't be because there's thirty trucks or fifty trucks that are obeying the law. It's because you're going to have one or two that aren't, that aren't stopping at that stop sign, that are texting while they're going through. And as a developer, hopefully, an incentive while you're talking to crews to say, "Look, if you're not in compliance with this, you're off, because I'm not going to have this thing shut down," is the kind of hammer that you would need, that we can provide as a policy, because this community will continue to grow. It is planned. It is part of a vibrant community that we all love. But we've heard it already on the southwest side of town. We're going to hear it again as we move forward, and I'm glad that we're going to do a committee of the whole to address it. So all of those people who have expressed concern previously and moving forward, if we can get it done before the end of the year, that'd be awesome.
Like to entertain a motion?
Quick question, Mayor, for Attorney Riffle. Stan, what's the law on this one? I mean, we're approving a plat, basically, right?
A preliminary plat.
Right. What's, I was against the rezone on this. I didn't support, you know, voting for that rezone. What is the criteria here for either voting for or against this plat?
Well, if you approve this plat, so long as the developer proceeds and presents a final plat that is in substantial conformity with the preliminary plat, they have every right to proceed. In terms of denying a preliminary plat, so long as the plat is presented consistent with your long-range land use plan and your zoning, which is now in place, you better have some really, really good reasons based on health, safety, and welfare to turn it down.
Okay, so it's similar to the rezone criteria?
The rezone, they don't have a right to rezone.
Okay, but so it's not similar to the rezone?
No, no.
Okay, well, because you kind of, you laid out similar criteria during the rezone discussion.
No.
You did.
Rezone, you have no right to a rezoning, so long as you have a reasonable use of the property under its current zoning. And it was being, I'm sorry, got a frog. They had every right to continue to farm it.
Okay.
Which is a absolutely perfect use.
Okay, that answers my question.
Once you did that, you kind of laid the ground.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thanks, thanks, Stan.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Rosak, so moved.
Second, Kavieski.
Any further discussions, comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosak.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
On to our presentation discussion on planned development overlay zoning districts. Mr. Gallo.
I'd just like to introduce Rachel Olssner. She's our planning department intern. She's a local resident that grew up in the city. She graduated from Oconomowoc High School, and now she's a student at UW-Milwaukee. She put together a presentation regarding planned developments. We held a public hearing earlier on an ordinance that talked about termination of planned This is more of an explanation to the council of where the planned developments all are in the community and which ones are, were actually built and which ones weren't. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Rachel. Thank you.
Hi, like you said, I'm Rachel, the planning intern. First, I just want to make sure that everybody has a packet. That was one that we asked you to bring from the Plan Commission, but I have a couple extras if somebody doesn't have it. Okay, perfect. So I guess to start off, I thought that it would be nice to give some background on what planned developments do and what it looks like in the city of Oconomowoc. Jason already kind of explained that to you at the beginning of this meeting, but planned development districts are intended to be an overlay district, which grants developers flexibility within the zoning code. They grant developers this flexibility in exchange, the city gets, you know, economic development opportunities that they might not otherwise have had. So right now, the city of Oconomowoc has twenty-six different planned development districts. The earliest one is dating back to nineteen ninety-six. A lot of these, eleven of them to be exact, have had different amendments or updates passed, so these are not, you know, static. They've been, multiple of them have been changed over time in the form of amendments. The purpose of this study was to kind of see an inventory, like what, how many planned developments do we have? Where are they? What does it look like on a map? We, as the planning department, thought it would be beneficial to be removing unnecessary PDs or the ones that haven't been constructed. So Jason deals a lot with, you know, people calling him banks, calling him, wanting to know, "Is this property in compliance?" And then he then has to look through, "Okay, well, is it in a PD now?" And this takes a lot of time, and the zoning map gets cluttered as we put more and more districts that grant these exemptions and flexibility. And it gets to be a lot to keep track of for the planning department. So to make ourselves more efficient, that's why we're proposing these removals of these PDs. And then we'd also eventually like to place the PD language into our zoning code. So right now, our zoning code doesn't have the existing, currently existing PDs. They're not all laid out in our zoning code, so that would also help the planning department. If somebody inquires, Jason could say, "Oh, if you go to this section, you'll be able to see everything. All of the planned development requirements and exemptions are listed right there in the zoning code." So we have seventeen planned developments that we're recommending keeping. They are all listed out in the packets, and I'm not going to go through every single one of these, because they all have very, you know, similar reasons. They all, if we remove the PD, that would cause the existing development to be out of compliance with our traditional zoning code. Many of them are for lake shoreline setbacks. Our Saviors is a really good example. If you guys have walked around the lake, you can see just how close that building is built to the lake. That's allowed for by the PD district that it is in. So if we got rid of that, they would no longer be in compliance, which is why we're recommending keeping that one. So there are several that are like that. There's also a few that are, that are granting higher densities or different types of housing, so Lakewood Estates, there's multifamily housing allowed in something that's a suburban residential zoning district. So several of them are related to types of housing in certain districts as well. And then there's a few of them that are more recent, Journey Twenty-One, Arrowood, that have just been passed, and those developments are still underway, so it wouldn't make sense to be removing those until we, you know, have the full development completed, and they're in the process right now. So those are kind of the main reasons why we would like to keep these seventeen planned developments. Moving on to the ones that we are going to be eventually recommending that we remove, these ones I'll go through in a little bit more detail, just so you can see maybe why it would be a good idea to remove some of these. So we've got nine of them. The first one up there is the Lexington Square condominiums. Originally, that was, that area was zoned UR-ten. Now it is zoned RMH, which allows for a higher density than the original zoning. So that building was originally not in compliance with the traditional zoning for density requirements, but because of that zoning change, it now is, and the PD, we feel, is no longer necessary. The Blue Ribbon Shops were never built. It's been, they were approved in, I believe it was two thousand eight, and so it's been, you know, over a decade, and there's been no construction happening there, so we don't feel that it would make any sense to keep that PD around after so long of not seeing construction. The Hospitality Campus, there is some construction there. There was supposed to be, according to the original PD, two hotels, an office building and a restaurant, and right now, we have the Stabridge Hotels there. They are in compliance with the traditional zoning right now, and the exemptions that were granted by the PD were for the restaurant and office building setbacks, which those were never constructed. So again, that one is one that we don't feel like we need to keep. The Meadows at Rosenau Creek, that one is now considered the Preserve at Prairie Creek. There's another PD that covers that same area. So the original development that was submitted for the Meadows at Rosenau Creek was never built, and the PD for the Preserve at Prairie Creek is still in effect, so we're recommending getting rid of this one, because that was never constructed. One Two Two Seven, Roebuck Drive, again, that one was never constructed. It was supposed to be a community-based residential facility, not ever built. The Franklin Street Lofts were never constructed. The Rockwell Village at Fowler Lake was constructed, as you can see, the original plan for that development that the PD was granted for, the original plan was never constructed. This was the next plan for that, for that area that was constructed under traditional zoning. So that one is also in compliance with our traditional zoning. Probably the most complicated one is the Paps Farms Town Center, and right now, there's actually two PDs related to that, PD Thirteen Oh Seven and PD Twenty-One Ten. They both cover the same area, so we're recommending getting rid of PD Thirteen Oh Seven, because Twenty-One Ten is the newer PD that covers that same area. And then there, the only thing, that whole area was intended to be a huge shopping center and, you know, have all of these different amenities, and the only thing that we have there now, after more than a decade, is the Fleet Farm. So the Fleet Farm does, there are two cases where the Fleet Farm is not in compliance with traditional zoning, and that is in regards to parking stalls and then paved surface setbacks. So the planning department is recommending removing that PD, but we would like to work with Fleet Farm to get them into compliance. The zoning administrator, according to our code, is able to waive paved surface setbacks, and the place that, that setback is not being followed, that was intended to be a connection for a road coming in, so it was supposed to be, you know, for connectivity, and that's something that we promote as a planning department. And so if the zoning administrator is willing to waive that setback, that would bring Fleet Farm into compliance with that. And then the other issue of noncompliance is the parking, which the Plan Commission is able to reduce parking requirements by twenty percent if the applicant is able to show that it would not be harmful to the public. And so I've never seen the Fleet Farm parking lot at full capacity, and I think that we'd be able to demonstrate to the Plan Commission. But of course, we would not remove that PD until we have established that that area would be in compliance. So those are, those are the PDs that we're recommending for removal. So the next steps that we would go through are tonight would be to approve the ordinance that would allow us to terminate these PDs, and then further down the road, we would introduce another ordinance that would actually call for the actual removal of those PDs. And then, as I mentioned before, incorporating the currently active PD language into our code and then updating the zoning map, so we have something less cluttered, easier for the public to read, easier for our staff to use.
Thank you very much. Do we have any comments or questions?
Do we have any comments or questions from council? Alderman Kavieski.
Can you go back to the Fleet Farm? When that, I don't know if this PD that I'm, in reference applies to this, but when that came about, there were several sizes of buildings that were allowed within the plan development. There was some consolidation, which got them to the 218,000 square feet, which kind of eliminated additional big box development in that area. Is that all part of the PD that we're going to then eliminate? Or are there any other restrictions that, that would prohibit another big box? Or is there a discussion with the, the property owner and developer of that to show what they would have?
Yeah, those are all great points. When Rachel was doing this study and we came to the Paps Farms Town Center, that was a big one, a head scratcher. I didn't know what to do with it. But, you know, I gave it a lot of thought and we're, the most recent update on that was in 2014. There hasn't been anything at that time. We removed the monument wall and we changed some stormwater stuff. We, 2014 was what, eight years ago. A lot has changed in eight years. You know, there's been this thing called, you know, the internet and Amazon and, you know, and, and, and all this other stuff, the retail has, has really changed in eight years. And me, myself, knowing the way that this council thinks, I think you don't want previous council members dictating how the town center should really be developed, especially with all these changes that are happening. I've had a lot of developers contact me in the last year or so, talking about, hey, maybe the town center should go a different direction. So we don't really know how this is going to go. So I think we should kind of talk, and I have not talked to the owner out there yet, but I'm thinking we should maybe, time to revisit it and, and look and see what the, what the new process would be. These are something that'll come down to the council, but you know, if we're looking at all the, all the PDs, it's been eight years since we last amended it. So it's just kind of an idea.
Any other questions for council?
One, one other.
Alderman Kavieski.
So this would be the trigger to initiate those conversations and basically update the master planning via the, the plan development documents?
The next item on the agenda is this ordinance to give the council the power to direct staff to notice the owners, have them come in and, and you could potentially terminate the, the PDs then.
So let's, let's move on into what the action item is. And that action item is to consider Act Ordinance 22-01037, creating Section 17804G of the City of Oconomowoc zoning code regarding termination of plan developments. This is an ordinance and this is the first reading. So if we would maybe jump into that and then open it up for some more questions, Mr. Gallo. And Rachel, great job. Thank you for all your due diligence. Nicely done.
Fair. Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea to give us the ability to, to bump these things out. Tonight is just about whether we have the authority to do that and start that process. So I'm all for that. I do have some concerns and I want to talk, hopefully we have a good, robust debate about Paps Farms, because I think just ending the plan development for them may be a mistake. But I think, you know, that's not the, this isn't the time to discuss this. So I'm, I'm in favor of the ordinance as, as drafted.
Any further questions or comments from Mr. Gallo?
No.
Alderman Mulder.
I, I think it's just, I appreciate you doing this. I think it, to your point, it cleans up a lot of things. It was, the booklet that was put together was excellent. It was really helped me understand exactly why we were doing it and, you know, holding, holding people accountable to what we say and then also knowing that, you know, that we will continue to support them once, to make sure they remain in compliance. I think it's just, it's excellent work.
And to be crystal clear, we're not making any decisions to remove or keep anything today. It's just creating the ordinance that can move us in this direction and then council will make that decision. Alderman Shellpepper, did you have a question?
How do you feel about the, the five years? I mean, what, you know, I see you, we were originally on the five. You thought the five was right. The Plan Commission went to seven. I mean, where do you come down on this still? Have you seen the light? Are you at seven now? Or you're like, no, that's, that's, that's really not right still.
No, I wanted you to see in the original thing, what I presented to the Plan Commission, five years. And, and I'm thinking five years is, is probably long enough, but we have a, a member of the Plan Commissioner that's in the business. And he's like, sometimes, you know, recession will hit or something, or something gets delayed and, and five years would go by very fast. He asked that we bump it to seven years. So I, you know.
It doesn't, you don't, I mean, if it's, after that five-year period though, it doesn't automatically remove the, the PD, right?
Right. It wouldn't automatically terminate.
Right, it just gives us the opportunity to, to reevaluate it, to look at it and say, hey, this, it's been five years, what's, what's going on? So. So from, from my view, I, I'd like to see it back to the five as opposed to the seven. Well, I, you know, and I'm, I'm willing to make the motion, but I kind of was trying to get a, a feeling from other members of the council before I do, so.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I don't need a. Give me a second, you know?
I think that's a good point.
Any other comments per his question, anybody? Then would someone like to make a motion, Alderman Shellpepper?
Okay, well, so is this going to be a full motion then or like an amending motion kind of thing? We have to vote on a full motion afterwards.
No, you can do the motion with the amendment right out of the gate.
Right out of the gates. And remember, council, this is a first reading. Or you can waive it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance with the change that the seven years be changed to five years and to waive the second reading.
Second, Kavieski.
Any further discussions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Business, consider Act on Resolution 22-R3051, authorizing the execution of the use of the ARPA funds for the public side lead service line replacement.
Yep, thank you. Earlier this evening, I committed the whole, you saw the presentation on the lead service line program. The recommendation out of that was to approve the Resolution 22R3051, which authorizes us to use up to 700,000 of ARPA funds for the public side lead service line replacement.
Do you have any questions or comments? Alderman Douglas.
So earlier in committee of the whole, there was about 900-ish for us, right?
Yes.
We have an idea of how much the 700 is going to cover.
I mean, it, it kind of depends. We're getting, depending on what area it is, if it's a Wisconsin Avenue, North Lake Road, Oakwood, you know, that, that's about twice as expensive or maybe two and a half times as expensive as, you know, an internal street.
Also, you have the opportunity during the budget workshop to look at other different funding beyond what the initial ask is. Alderman Kavieski.
I'm in support of this. I think this is a, a good, good, good program, good start. And if only there was somebody from the media here that would maybe make sure it gets out into the paper to make sure that people know it's available, that'd be awesome.
Alderman Rosack. Who you're talking to. Alderman Rosack.
I, I mean, people should know about this. I mean, they're getting door flyer, they're getting door hangers, they're getting knocks on the doors. I think this is our third year doing it, right?
Second.
Second year? I was here for one of the first meetings where people came and asked questions when there was an informational meeting. So, you know, people know about it if they're paying attention. I just think some people don't want to spend the money. I'm all for this. I think we should do as much as we can to eliminate it and potentially put more funds towards it. But we, I, I don't want to, I, I will not be in favor of putting funds or funding it totally for the, the, the people side, because some of those people have already spent, in other parts of the community, have already spent money, their own money on ladder, their laterals. And we don't fix laterals for anybody, ever. So if their lateral freezes in the middle of winter, they have to pay to fix it. That, you know, that's always the way it's been. So I, I think we should just be careful how we talk about that, because there's a bunch of people, you know, whatever it was last year, 90, 100 people that already paid to get their laterals done. You know, they took the loan and then they funded the rest themselves, so.
But what is the, what is the question? That's the same.
It wasn't a question, just a statement more or less, that I think people do know about it. I mean, they're getting, you guys are putting door hangers out there, they're doing their thing. You guys are doing your thing and getting the word out. I think some people just, you know, are ignoring it, because it's just a small portion of the lead.
Alderman Mulder.
So I'm in favor of the program. I'm curious, do we have any other funding? Because the ARPA funds are fairly wide open now on what we can use them for, is there, is there any other way to, for us to fund the public side out of the utility reserves or anywhere else that we wouldn't have to use ARPA funds for that?
Yeah, so right now, the utility budgeted 350,000 for this year. I believe they spent all of that by the end of June. So what we're doing, what we're doing is trying to continue this program throughout the end of this year and, and into part of next year.
We could do, I mean, if they have.
You could do a budget amendment and use water funds.
Take money out of.
But we'll take a look at what water has for capital coming up and you can see that they're going to be borrowing, they're going to be asking to borrow money in the future.
So that, I mean, what I'm proposing could work, but it, we don't have the funds elsewhere to take that money.
Right now, we don't.
Okay, so ARPA is our best. I just don't want to, I'd rather spend restricted funds before we're spending unrestricted funds. If we have them, but since we don't have them, we won't spend them.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying.
Alderman Alt, Altman-Cloth.
So two things, are you doing door hangers? I thought we were just doing letters to the homeowners.
We did door hangers to all those 250 partials in addition to those door hanger, in addition to the letters. So everyone got a letter early on and we went out and tried to really let the partials know that selfishly, that it, it's the best for us, right? It gets rid of the lead, it gets rid of the, the grant, but doesn't put holes in our streets and, and whatnot.
That's good to know, because when our utility manager explained this to me, when he talked about the letters being sent out to the, the homeowners, not necessarily the resident, and if it was a renter not knowing, that was, that was kind of disheartening to hear. But then, in terms of paying for the private side of it, you know, if we ever did find a way to have funding, I mean, are we prepared to go back and reimburse people that were responsible and paid for it themselves right away?
I mean, last year, we had the program. Before that, I mean, our records show that, you know, we, we didn't have people that did private side lead laterals, at least they didn't tell us. I mean, that's why we have so many assumed, we're trying to confirm all those. We'd go through, I think we had six or seven years of street projects on lead lateral streets and we let everyone know and nobody, nobody did one.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Yeah, I just want to be a little careful about saying somebody's not responsible if they don't get their lateral replaced, because you might not have the money to do it. So, and, and I get, I get your point that, hey, people in the past, they paid up, you know, they might, that, that's the, that's the, that's the deal. I mean, you, we don't all get the same things. It's not all equal, it's not always going to be fair. I mean, we, we do the best we can, we're providing the funds we can in the past, we're going to provide the funds we can in the future. But we're not held to this immovable standard forever because we had a certain ratio last year or the year before. So that's how I feel about it.
And really, when we have more money than we did last year, that's why we really want to get the word out there that, I mean, DNR said, we might not have any money next year on the private side. We have a lot of money this year, we want people to take advantage of that.
Alderman Kavieski.
As a final point to that, how many lead laterals are there left in the city to deal with? Approximately?
900.
900. So.
On our side, yeah, about, about 1,100 on the, on the customer side.
Yep. And the door hangers were sent out or, or hung this year, last year, the year before?
Letters were sent every year. We also went and door, door hangers on those 250. That was like in the last three weeks here. So we're getting, we're getting good responses. We're, we frankly, we're finding a lot of those partials are not partials. They're, they were completely done. A lot of on the West Wisconsin, which, which is good, but a lot of those partials are not partials. They're copper all the way in. So we're updating our records and, yeah, those numbers are going down.
Alderman Mulder.
I, I think it'd be, I know you showed us earlier that you can let us know by district who has, especially those lead partials, you know, knocking on a door and saying, hey, you know, there's, there's a program here and you can be lead free in your house. It's already halfway done. I think that those are easy conversations to have, so if we can get those lists of addresses, that would be fantastic. I'd like to see both, but highlighted which are partials really, it's a great conversation to have with the homeowner.
Exactly. Yeah, thank you.
City Administrator.
Oh, hi. I just wanted to add on to what Matt just said. My comment was that we have a lot of laterals right now where it's lead on the private side, but the public side's already done. So they have lead-free water access to them. So we'd like to reach out to them as much as possible to make sure that they have the opportunity to change out theirs while we have the funding available.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder. Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
And to consider an act to authorize and direct city attorney to settle Fleet Farm excessive assessment claim versus the city, case number 22-CV-887. This was discussed in a closed session and I'd like to entertain a motion. So moved.
Second, Shellpepper.
Any comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
A final new business is to consider Act on Authorization for city staff to begin preparing a project plan and TIF agreement for Rockwell Partners LLC redevelopment project. Mr. Duffy.
First, thank you to the council and the developer. Obviously, we've had a lot of thoughtful conversation, debate about a project, public-private partnerships and downtown revitalization are always challenging type developments. So with that, after our committee of the whole deliberations, it'd be appropriate for the city council to direct staff to begin development of the North Main Street Tax Increment Project Plan and Tax Increment Agreement incorporating the following elements. A five-story, as proposed, mixed-use commercial residential development. Zero setbacks, as proposed. The city to transfer lands and enter into a 99-year lease for public surface parking. The boardwalk extension with the evaluation of the pier amenity. The public restrooms in a loca, in the location as originally proposed. Funds to be allocated for the Village Green reconstruction. The removal of the community room from the project, however, an allocation of $50,000 to investigate alternative location for a potential community space.
So these were the things that were discussed in private session that were legally authorized to bring to the public and to the council. And at this point, I'd like to entertain a motion. So moved, Ellis.
Second, Kavieski.
Any further discussion or comments from council with regard to this request for staff to move forward? Alderman Spiegelberg.
I just want to tell you guys, thank you so much for everything you've done so far. I will vote against this tonight, just from the standpoint of the four stories. I've gone back and forth on this and I've done my numbers with the people I've talked to. And because it is a TIF, our citizens are invested in this. And I really would have liked to see this work with the four stories. My voice tonight is going to be for those people who very loudly spoke to me about the four stories. As far as the other aspects, I was on, I'm on board with that, the zero setbacks, the transfer, 99-year lease, the revision that we talked about with the boardwalk and pier extension, doing the public restrooms, but not doing the community room.
Any other comments from council before we vote? Call vote, call, roll call, please.
Alderman Douglas.
Nay.
Alderman Rosick. Alderman Rozak.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Cloth.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Nay.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Nay.
Alderman Kavieski.
Aye.
Thank you. Move on to staff reports. Thackeray Trail Traffic Update, Chief Fister.
Thank you, Mayor. We wanted to come in, we've had complaints from citizens on Thackeray Trail. It was a controversial topic when it was brought in and so forth. The police department's been out there. I can tell you, we have been out on Thackeray Trail over two hundred and fifty-five times, monitoring traffic, stop signs, the flow of traffic, everything out there. So we're, we've been out there quite a bit. Citizens are still making comments about speeding vehicles and so forth. I can let everybody know that in April, we did traffic studies with our speed boards and so forth. All of that data came back. The fifty percentile of the speed of all vehicles was twenty-four miles an hour. The key one is the eighty-five percentile, which is, came back as twenty-seven miles an hour. So that means that basically, you know, out of eighty, eighty-five percent of the vehicles are going twenty-seven miles an hour. That's the average that's there.
Or, or lower?
Or, or lower. You could go lower. The twenty-one to thirty mile per hour range came in at about seventy-five percent. So that was, that was the one traffic study. We did another one. And I could tell you that was about five thousand three hundred and six vehicles for that study that went through there during the time period. The other traffic study as well came in, the fifty percentile came in at twenty-six miles per hour. And then the eighty-fifth percentile came in at thirty miles per hour. The twenty-one to thirty mile per hour range came in at eighty-five percent. So eighty-five percent of the vehicles are going between twenty-one and thirty miles per hour on Thackeray Trail as well. With that, we've been talked to and requested various things to control the speeding in the area from speed bumps to more, you know, stop signs in the area. Right now, at this point, the police department and talking with Public Works as well, that we are not recommending any stop sign, additional stop signs on that roadway. We're going to continue to monitor it as traffic flows and throughout the years. And we are going to repost again when school starts to make sure that we have the accurate numbers again. So that's kind of where we are on Thackeray Trail right now. I do, we are working as well on a process for if citizens want to request a stop sign that actually would explain the process and how we determine if stop signs go in or do not go in.
Thank you. Alderman Mulder.
That's, that's great information. Are those the speed detectors anonymous? The drivers don't know they're being detected at the moment? Or is it one of those boards where they?
We, we actually have the ability to do either way.
Okay.
So the one, the ones that we did, the first one I gave you, it displayed the speeds.
Okay.
The second one, we did not display any speeds because they kept calling us saying that you're, they're broken. But, you know, but it was actually getting all their speeds.
Yeah. So it, so when they didn't see their speed, it did go up a little bit.
Little bit, so.
Alderman Kavieski.
Right.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were finished.
They, those numbers sound good to me, but I have no reference point. Is that, is that within your expectations?
Absolutely. That, that's within my expectations, you know? I mean, we're within that five mile per hour range, you know, of the speed limit on the road, that, that's within our expectations, you know? Are there cars that are exceeding that? There are. I mean, but that's on every street in our city, you know, that, you know, somebody can come through at forty-five, you know? And I understand, you know, living where I do off of Connaught Park Way, that happens, you know? And who's going to draw your attention? It's the one that's coming through at forty-five and not the people that are, you know, going the speed limit as well.
Alderman Kavieski.
We've had some conversation before. I, I think the, the speed boards help. They're effective. It'd be nice if we could take a look at integrating a, a camera that would take a picture of a vehicle that is in excessive speed or not complying with stopping at the stop sign. And I know we can't issue tickets off of that.
Correct.
But we can issue communication off of that. That might be an effective continued deterrent. Because you can only be in so many places at once, right?
And I agree with that, but that also takes a lot of manpower to then go back and watch all that video and then, you know, track it out in person and, and do all that, just so you're aware.
Great discussion. We get to the operating budget and the need for more officers.
If I'd volunteer, I, I think if, you know, there, there's facial recognition stuff. I'm sure there's a way to, to put something into an algorithm that if, if this.
The budget is unlimited.
Any, any other comments or questions? Alderman Douglas?
Chief, do you see a differentiate between vehicles coming into the subdivision compared to out?
The speeds were slightly higher going westbound. So towards Silver Lake, speeds were higher.
Going towards the new extension.
Correct.
Alderman Rozak.
In the second study, how many vehicles in the second study?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm going to report this back to the.
Five thousand six hundred and ninety-nine.
And my understanding, when you did the study out by my subdivision a few years ago, when we had similar complaints when the road opened up with the new, new development, was that the signs also, there, there's some algorithm inside the signs as well that, that when it gets the speed, it knows when people try to brake. So it'll, it'll get them, and then they see the sign, and it, and it throws out the, oh shit, I'm going too fast, I'm going to brake quick, right? And it, and it picks up, it knows that the car sees it somehow because immediately you start braking. So it catches you even if you're speeding, even if you see the sign. Now, maybe you spot it way down.
Right.
I mean, you, it can't take into account that, but the people that aren't paying attention and are speeding and then see the sign and then, you know, and that's that. I mean, I don't think it's, it's never happened to me, of course.
Of course.
Even been given a speeding ticket.
That's how every speeding ticket works.
Oh, is that, oh, okay. But I appreciate you doing that.
In reference to these, do they take into consideration bikers, bikes, pedal bikes, that is, and runners and mopeds?
We, we set the low speed, so we can set the low speed. Usually for that, I mean, we're setting it on a road that's twenty-five, we're setting the low speed, you know, at fifteen or twenty miles an hour on there. So I mean, if they're going fifteen to twenty miles an hour, it would catch them.
How fast can you run?
So, yeah, I'm not sure.
I will tell you that in Oconomowalk, the, the lake, their speed limit there is fifteen miles an hour.
Correct.
And they pulled me over, so. And I was on my bike. I'll just leave it at that.
Chief, if you could just put those numbers together and send to Lori and let's include it with our Friday update.
And I do have, and I'll include some other information on stop sign placement as well.
Perfect.
So.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for chief? But thank you very much, sir. Without any further staff reports, do we have any reports or comments from Alderman?
I do.
Alderman Ellis.
Chief, I have a couple of questions for you. Is it possible you can come up? You know, I am very pro police.
Absolutely.
Pro law enforcement. As a matter of fact, I was one of the few.
Alderman Ellis, it's something that's not on the agenda, really.
I am going to say this whether you like it.
No, you can say it.
Or not.
I just don't want you asking.
I am going to say this, and I am going to ask him a question because I need some, I, I need some clarity.
Talk outside of this. I don't want you violating the open meetings law and get.
My question to you is this. When it comes to.
Kevin, so we're trying not to violate the open meetings law, so you can't ask him a question that's not on the agenda. Attorney Riffle is correct. I think it's very important for you to make your Alderman comments. That's fine. But Chief, would you please sit down? This is to protect your interests.
I want to hear the question. I mean, here you have to answer. You can still say the question out loud, right?
There you go. Yeah, absolutely. You can say it out loud. Absolutely, Kevin.
When it comes to positioning of calls, I need to know how they are addressed. When it comes to the hierarchy of what things actually get addressed first and things that don't get addressed until later, I need to know that. Because something happened, and I'm just going to put it out there right now. Friday the eighth at five fifteen, while I was at my house and my dog was with me, we were attacked by three dogs. They came onto our property and attacked us. My dog has gone through several surgeries since then, and I was attacked. Now, I called the police department, nine-one-one at five-seventeen. They did not arrive to my house until after I called the mayor, and it was almost thirty minutes. My concern is not about what happened just to me, but how many times has this happened in the community? And what we can do so that this doesn't happen again? That's my concern. I'm not pointing fingers at anybody. I want to know what we can do as a body, what we can do to help law enforcement to get to these calls much quicker. That's what I want to know.
So I will follow up on that, Alderman, to try to figure out if we can put that on the next agenda or have a discussion with our chief to see what those options are.
I've got some other private things that I'll have a conversation with him about, but that's my concern.
I think that's very valid, and we appreciate it. Any other comments from Alderman?
Don't ever try and shut me down again because I'm not that guy.
Any other comments from Alderman? Alderman Spiegelberg.
Kevin, I'm sorry to hear that that happened to you. I've been attacked by a dog a couple of times outrunning, not in this community. But, but it's not fun, and I'm really sorry to hear that that happened to you. I was going to take this in a lighter direction and encourage everybody to get out and enjoy the Waukesha County Fair, which starts tomorrow. Dollar day is only a dollar for parking, dollar for admission, and one ticket for every ride. My family's been involved at the Waukesha County Fair for twenty-five years, so it is the oldest county fair in the state of Wisconsin, and in my opinion, the best. So, get out and enjoy it.
Any other comments from Alderman? Alderman Kavieski.
Real quick, there was a comment made earlier about a fire in our community and the loss of life and the, the response time for Western Lakes Fire District. There's been efforts to get out the information associated with how to support Western Lakes Fire District and staffing and, and the information associated with the upcoming referendum on August ninth. If you're listening to this and you have questions, if you need any additional information about why that referendum is out there, please contact your Alderman, please contact Western Lakes Fire District. But some of, of those issues can be addressed with staffing, so they can respond in the timeframe that they, that they like and that the community needs to see. So we, we've been at the farmer's market for the last two weeks. And I believe will be for the next three weeks coming up until the day before. Alderman Altman Cloth has, has done a nice job organizing that effort at the farmer's market. And I know there's additional efforts by additional Alderman to get that information out. So we'll keep it up and hopefully everything comes together well on August ninth.
Alderman Rozak.
Yeah, you know, the, the citizen comment from someone about the fire response and the death. I think before those comments are made, we should, you should try to find out why. Actually, six minutes or seven minute response is actually really good. The fact that the fire department is right across the street doesn't matter. You still need firefighters to actually get in the trucks and go there, which is why we're doing the referendum, which is to put firefighters in their trucks and have people there full-time on call. If those individuals aren't there and we're relying on a mostly part-time staff, it can't happen. So I, I, I've looked into that issue. It is not necessarily any type of failure of the department. A six-minute, seven-minute call anywhere in the city is actually really good, but you still need people there, and people have to respond. My only other comment would be something I'd actually thought about before, which is just asking us to kind of readdress some of these issues with the ballards. I know that we're talking about ballards in some of their areas. I think City Beach is another area that we need to consider hardening for safety purposes. It's, City Beach and Village Green are two areas where I think if there's someone looking to do harm or drive a car into a, a, a crowd of people at, you know, bands on the beach or a beer garden, those are two spots they're going to pick. And I can tell you, just having been in DC, there are ballards everywhere in that city. Like every single government building has ballards. We actually have ballards that were built around the police department in front. And they're, they're very effective at obviously stopping a vehicle from attacking the building. So I think we need to continue looking into that. We've got a lot of ARPA funds, and we have also four million dollars sitting in unrestricted reserve account. And I don't think those ballards are going to cost five million bucks. So hopefully, we can address that this year.
Alderman Altman Cloth.
Also to add to the citizen comment about Western Lakes, right now, the response time, I believe, is eleven minutes and fourteen seconds. One of the things that I was the most shocked about when I moved to this community, moving, coming from the Milwaukee area, is that we don't have fire stations with firefighters just sitting in and waiting to go on a call. So the firemen that worked, and women, that worked on that particular fire that day, most likely, they came from home or from somewhere else within the community. They got there, they got their equipment, they got a truck, and they were there in seven minutes. And I appreciate their hard work. And unfortunately, we lose people in this community every day. And every single one of them is a loss.
Alderman Ellis.
On a lighter note, I want to go ahead and, and say that the mayor and the staff did an outstanding job on, what was that, fifty-eight CBS? He did a really, really good job. I, I got a phone call from a constituent and I immediately reached out, and you guys knew about it, and did an outstanding job, so.
Thank you. Any other comments from Alderman? Okay, moving on to comments from the mayor. You stole my thunder. I just would like to kind of shout out to.
Should I dismiss?
Yeah. No. Shout out to Bob Duffy, because Bob Duffy really coordinated that whole, whole together and did a great job in trying to bring people together. A lot of this stuff you don't have control over, so thank you, Bob, for doing that. I thought it was a nice representation of our community. Secondly, as we talk about labor, we talk about the upcoming referendum, you also have an example here of the need for more police officers. Because think about the thirty-minute response time that Alderman Ellis had on a personal bodily, bodily, bodily injury. So as we start going into the operating budget, we really have to look at what our staffing is for our police department. Because right now, we need more help. If we're going to have the coverage that we want, if we're going to have the response time, and we all, I know, are very passionate about public safety, let's look at the whole picture as we go into budget time. With no more comments, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move, Kavieski.
Second, Altman Cloth.
Alderman favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, and thank everybody for coming.